Good evening. This is the January meeting of the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. We are an appointed advisory board consisting of five city residents, appointed by the Burlington City Council, two extraterritorial members appointed by the county commissioners. This board makes its recommendations to the Burlington City Council. Please silence your cell phones or any other electronic equipment. Be advised that this meeting is being recorded. As a point of order, if you are asked or called on to have comments before the commission, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address the chair. Public comments are limited to three minutes. If you will, please give us a rolling call for the commission.
Chair Black?
Present.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick is absent.
Absent for health.
Member Beasley?
Here.
Member Parker?
Present.
Member Rome?
Here.
Member Gamble is absent.
Alternate Hill?
Here.
Alternate Wright is absent.
Conscript.
Member Nelson?
Here.
And Member Rayner is also absent, so we have a call.
All right. Before we go any further, does any commissioner have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for tonight? If so, please let me know. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held December 18th.
Mr. Stewart?
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If there's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Very good. Item number three. Mr. Ayed Tasha to present a request to rezone property from neighborhood business to general business limited use. The property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Avon Avenue and South Meven Street on the west side of Avon Avenue, addressed as 806 South Meven Street, and consisting of Alamanis County Tax Identification Number 135384. Is Mr. Tasha?
Yes.
If you would like to approach, please.
I'm representing him. Can I approach?
Yes, you may. Name and address, please.
Home address or the business address?
Home address. Yours?
My name is Rashid Abdallah. My home address is 2153 Capstone Drive in Graham, North Carolina, 27253.
Very good.
Can you tell your last name?
Sure. A. B. is in Boyd. D. is in David. A. L. L. A. H.
Thank you.
If you would like to make your presentation.
Yes. So I am Mr. Kutechat's representative. I'm a real, commercial real estate agent. We are seeking a resort, conditional use of resorting for that property to kind of expand it a little bit more than neighborhood business. Burlington and the cities around it are changing and growing, so we're pursuing different avenues of business for that property. There's currently a convenience store there. There's a separate building next to it on the side, and that's what we're trying to expand a little bit more. It is a little bit industrial heavy in this, in that area, so we're looking to maybe lean in on that or maybe pursue something a little bit different.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions at this time?
The neighborhood business classification that's currently there for the zoning allows pretty much everything that's only a little useless except for car shells and rimples. I'm assuming that's what the aim is.
That's, yeah, that's one of the aims.
So between that request for that additional use, the density for multifamily would be different between neighborhood business and general business as well? But those are primarily the two modifications. All of the other uses, as you mentioned, between neighborhood business and general business are all exactly the same.
I was gonna say, again, between general business and...
The current zoning is neighborhood business, and what they're requesting is general business?
The difference is cars and...
The density for multifamily.
And is there a reason for that distinction? Does cars or multifamily substantially change the neighborhood?
I would ask that question of the applicant in terms of what they're proposing and what kind of impact they might feel would be imposed on the neighborhood. Staff has a recommendation included in their, in the report which you all have received, but you might want to ask that of the applicant.
What can I answer to that?
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, as far as the auto sales use, it's a little bit industrial in that area. There's a muffler shop down the street. There's a towing service down the street. There's only two used auto sales in that area, so we're looking at a little bit of variety as far as the auto sales and kind of, you know, lean on those two shops in the area. As far as multifamily, we're not looking to tear everything down and build multifamily there right now. It's more of a commercial use purpose right now as far as the retail and auto sales.
And I guess I'll just, maybe you aren't familiar with the zoning of the area, but are there some of the uses that you're talking about further west where it might be industrial zoning?
Yeah, so if you go down a little bit west there, it will... There's the towing that's on South Meven Street. There's the muffler shop. And you have like, you know, you have the adislating products, you have the supply. So there's a lot of industrial, like what industrial down the street.
And this...
That's in auto sales.
Yeah.
There's two auto sales right next to each other right there. If I'm not, at least that's what I see.
And those, just for everybody's reference, those are permitted in those zoning districts?
Mm-hmm. Like I said, I'm just trying to add a little bit variety. It's gonna be a little mall and pop shop. And just kind of give a little bit more for the community there as well.
But it's right in the middle of residential area, right? Everything around it's residential.
Yes, there's one plot of residential that separates that piece of property was when you go down a little bit.
But you said it's currently convenience stores out there?
There's a convenience store there right now, yes. And we're gonna keep the convenience store. There's a separate building right next to the convenience store, and that's where the auto sales are. And there's enough parking for both. I did submit to the City and Planning Department kind of the layout of how it will be set up.
Does any other commissioner have a question? If not, I will ask one. As far as reconditioning, repairing automobiles on the lot?
No. No, there's not been, there's not, there's not enough space for that.
So there'll be no, no...
No reconditioning, no repairing. It'll be strictly used for auto sales.
And hours of operation proposed?
It'll be a typical, like nine to five. Yeah, nine to five.
Seven days a week?
Six days a week.
What day will you be closed?
Sunday. Close it on Sunday?
I'm trying to remember the fancy, what is that required for another lot?
Screening.
Greening.
Screen, screening, yeah.
Screening is required.
Yeah, and we're more than happy to follow any kind of rules and regulations.
And of course, the lighting would be...
Yep, those would all be...
All of the UDO lighting.
Yeah. This type of a change of use, if it was, if the rezoning was approved, would require going to the technical review committee for a site plan? We would need a landscape plan, obviously, to show how they're meeting the UDO requirements. Any lighting as well?
Very small lot. Landscaping and everything.
Yeah.
I would highlight it today, it's... If you have, say, more than five cars for sale, where are the customers gonna park?
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be, it's not gonna be one of those big car dealerships. It's gonna be small, locally owned. He's gonna be running a very small shop.
Any other questions right now from the commissioners? Thank you, sir, if you'd like to. We will open this up to the public. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, now would be the time to do so. No? No, we're, okay.
There's a hand raised. There's a hand raised.
Oh, yes, ma'am, sorry. You got to shake your head good.
My name is Lisa Stewart. I'm with Marl Town Community Group. Ms. Lydia is Chair of the organization. I am Vice Chair of the organization. I think some of you are familiar with us. We've been cleaning up Marl Town. I joined Marl Town in 2019. And I go around Avon picking up trash every Monday.
For those, for those who are not familiar, would you explain Marl Town, please?
Ms. Lydia, you want to speak? Please. This is Ms. Lydia Jones.
And your address, Ms. Jones?
70 Vernon, Avon Avenue.
Thank you.
My name is Lydia Jones. I'm a resident of Marl Town. Wish y'all know it as Mar Town. In 2012, I lost my son. He was murdered on a front porch. That started my journey in working in the community, trying to make a difference. Working with the kids and going to different meetings. Anything I can do to make a difference, to make a change with the drugs and the violence and, you know. And that has been a part of that since even before my son got killed. There were some murders over there. So we formed a group in 2017 called Marl Town Community Group. And we have had a lot of support from the city of Groton that motivate us to keep us moving. And we have done a lot to try to make a difference in the community. We, during the pandemic, we did packages to the residents. We put stuff in the package that we thought that they may need since it was, you know, we couldn't go out really on that prime. So I mean, we have been blessed to get a donation to that lot in Marl Town. What is it? At the six, what?
642 South Meven Street.
642 South Meven Street.
Community Garden.
Community Garden. And this summer, we will have a playground with that. And we was blessed to get a grant to help pay for the playground. So we doing a lot of things in the community. We had the garden and we, we gave out the vegetables to the community, to the residents in about the water, vegetables out of the garden. And we will continue to do it as long as we can. And we're working with the kids in the community. I volunteer to work with the two ring. I volunteer to work with this program called Teens Got to Talk through the Bronco Police Department. So we are doing all we can to try to motivate the kids to change the mindset of them, the lifestyle that they live. We want them to grow up to know that they don't have to be a product of the, yeah, the problem. So we're working hard. We clean the community. Even the kids has got out with us. And the Bronco, the city of Bronco has donated the pickers and the gloves and the garbage bags to pick up the trash. So we try to continue to try to keep it looking decent over there, because before it was so nasty. I mean, trash was everywhere. And we have picked up, long ago picked up the trash since 2018. Eighteen, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. And so we're continuing to try to come up with ideas to bring our community up instead of letting people come in and terrorize us.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Stewart, what, what is your comment toward this?
Like I said, I pick up, there's a lot of trash at the store, empty bags of drugs, paraphernalia in it. I have reported it to the Bronco PD. Kids see they had residue in it. I did the cleanup with, organized with Ms. Lydia, cleaned up Avon. We cut down all them trees. And I worked with an officer to get a fence put up at that creek where people were hanging out right there. So we're trying to make a change. This is not the change that that community needs. That lot is small. People sell drugs in that parking lot. I wouldn't even have my kids go to that store. I don't even go there anymore. I stopped. It's not safe. And you talk about bringing something else there. It's not cool. You gotta clean the store first. It's an embarrassment. It's right there on Meven Street, all kind of cars back and forth, back and forth. And it looks like a zoo. You got people coming out the store, buy alcohol, sit right there and drink their alcohol at the store. It's not cool. No, no, I'm saying it's not cool.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes. I live over there, so I know.
Can you stand?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yes, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
My client is currently not running that store right now. He's leasing, he sold his business and is leasing it, leasing the land to the owner there, so we have nothing to do with that convenience store being ran. My client, he still owns the land, and he owns that building next door. That is something we can control. We are more than happy to help clean up the neighborhood if needed. I personally believe in paying forward and, you know, making a change. I volunteer with a bunch of different groups because that's my belief. So if there's anything that I can do as a real estate agent to help you guys, please let me know. Not related to this business at all. Okay? I'd be more than happy to help. But for the, the business matter, like I said, if there's any rules and regulations you guys want us to follow to keep the community safe, we're more than happy to do so. Obviously, it's bad business if the business is in an unsafe area, so, yes, we're looking forward to making it better.
So let me ask you a question now. So are you saying that this store is gonna be rented to someone else and that your client wants to put an auto shop or auto sales on the same lot?
Yeah, that's what I said. The building, that's, there's this, can I show you on your paper?
Yeah. I'm gonna go into the aerial actually.
Go. This one's mixed screen.
Everyone.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Can you zoom in?
Yes.
All right. So there's two buildings.
Want to come up around?
Yeah. There's two buildings. This is the convenience store. This is the separate building. This is where the car sales is gonna happen. There's parking here in front of this building, and that's pretty much where we're gonna be utilizing for the auto sales.
And how many cars can you fit in there?
So there's also parking here. So we're gonna, for auto sales, we're gonna utilize that space there and this space. The convenience store has parking on the front and on the side over there. So again, it's gonna be a small operation where it's not gonna be more than five cars because obviously, you can't fit.
This is too much. As a Realtor, you are aware that the owner of the property is responsible for this property, tenants and all.
There is, so in commercial, yes, common area maintenance.
So those questions, he cannot just say, well, I leased it and I have no control. We understand that, right?
So he, he's responsible for common area maintenance?
Okay.
He's, I mean, he has to work with the person leasing the building as far as what happens outside of the building?
Yes, he, he does.
Yes.
We're in agreement.
Yes. I was not aware of what happens outside of this store, so I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I just get a clarification in terms of the community, the Marl Town community? The group that is doing this work, what do they consider the boundaries of the Marl Town community?
That's a question. If we go back with the people that I grew up there saying that it's a few streets. It's Avon, Broad Street, Clay Court, and... Cameron.
And what's the last one?
Cameron.
Cameron. Does it go all the way back to Tucker Street? Yes. So when I was saying, we'll have to be from Sixth Street up to Tucker Street and over to probably back of Bayne's Club.
Clay.
Yeah.
Clay Ford. Cameron.
Yeah, oh, Alamanis Road.
And again, Alamanis Road is on the other side, yeah, because it ended before you got to Lake Leone, the elementary. I'd say you probably have some residents on Combe Street that consider themselves, on the north side.
And I have a question, if that's okay?
Sure.
Have you guys brought this, his attention before?
We are also on Burlington Community Land Trust also. We're on the Board of Directors.
Yep, so my question is, the issues that you have with the property being...
I've spoken. I've seen, you don't know the stuff I've seen. I've seen dope dealers running that store out from the front.
He says he talked to the other...
I told the owner, him one ear out there, I told Ms. Lydia. Burlington PD's parked out there where you're trying to put this, whatever, this auto thing. They've been parked there.
But has, so has Mr. Kutechat been made aware?
The man that's there to say he's the owner.
So he owns the business?
Yeah, that's who I spoke to.
Mr. Kutechat owns the land. Has Mr. Kutechat been made aware of the problems in that neighborhood?
I never seen Mr. Kutechat. I seen the own, the man that's there, owns that.
Okay. So now we're, we would like to move forward with this problem and help resolve it. Now, Mr. Kutechat is aware of that problem, and I mean, I came from Cleveland, so I can understand what happens over there. And so we can work with the owner on getting it cleaned up.
This stop won't happen overnight, baby.
Nothing happens overnight.
If you get that way, like that.
All right, so we're good.
That's something y'all can discuss after the meeting.
Sure.
We need to go ahead with items to hand, but thank you for bringing that to this attention. And I'm sure that y'all can work something out after you. Are there any more comments or questions from the commission on the proposal? Have we got any calls, any letters, anything?
I have people. Just inquiries about...
Just more?
Just inquiries about the rezoning and what it entails.
Do we have staff recommendation?
Yes, so staff is not recommending the rezoning request. The future land use designation for this area is traditional residential. So as you may be aware, much of the zoning in this area is inconsistent. However, staff feels that this change in adding the auto sales and repair and increasing the density is not consistent with the future land use designation and the neighborhood that surrounds the property. As noted, all of the requested uses except for auto sales and the increase of density is currently allowed under the current zoning. So increasing the density from multifamily from four units per acre to 24 units per acre is inconsistent as well as adding the auto sales or rental. So we are not recommending the rezoning per option number three, which is included in your packet, provided for inconsistency statement issued.
Any other comments from the commission? I've got a question. Jamie, was it because, because primarily the auto sales?
The auto sales is the major change as well as the increase in density. We don't feel that the site would support that, that increase in density, given the nature of the size, the location, and feel that the neighborhood business zoning meets the intent of what is trying to be achieved on the property, providing services and goods to support the community, and auto sales and, excuse me, auto sales or rental having that as an addition to this lot or the neighborhood.
Any other questions? At this point, I will take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend and all requests to rezone property from neighborhood business and be general business limited use, GBLU, properties located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Avon Avenue and South Meven Street on the west side of Avon Avenue, addressed as 806 South Meven Street, and consisting of Alamanis County Tax Identification Number 135384. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map in Section 4 of the Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The requested rezoning is not necessary for this location. Section is reasonable and in public interest, and the requested rezoning is incompatible with this existing land uses in the area. The current zoning is preferable for the area.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? A second. There is a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Roll color, please.
Chair Black?
Aye.
Member Beasley?
Aye.
Member Parker?
Aye.
Member Rome?
Aye.
Member Nelson?
Aye.
Member Hill?
All right. Mr. President, there will be a letter sent to you to let you know when the city council will meet on this. So the city council will meet on this. It will have a non-affirmable recommendation, but they are the ultimate decision. So you'll have a second opportunity to make a proposal. Thank you, thank you. Item four, rezoning, 2318. Mr. Oscar Arteola to present a request to rezone a portion of a property from office institutional to general business limited use. The portion of this property is to be, to be rezoned, is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of South Broad Street and East Webb Avenue on the west side of East Webb Avenue and addressed as 106 South Broad Street, and consisting of Alamanis County Tax Identification Number 136034. There is no change to the median density residential portion of this property. Mr. Arteola?
Present.
If you will, please, name and address.
My name is Oscar Archenka. Address is 80224 Elk Court, Burlington, North Carolina, 27215.
What is your proposal, sir?
My proposal, I've been in the car business for 10 years, and I'm looking to do the same thing, but, you know, I'm ready to branch out on my own. Just, I've done pretty well for myself. I worked for the Kutechalls for a long time, right after, right after high school. And from there, I just moved my way on up from finance manager to sales manager, and I'm just ready to do things on my own. I have two kids. I have a, I also have a fiance. We have, we have another business on 804 South Church Street, right next door to the Paul's Paint Street. It's called Curled Cheese and Esthetician. And so I'm just ready to do my own thing. There is some residential right there on Broad Street, but that's on the opposite side of the block. I'm not looking to use, I'm only looking to use the actual property where the, where the asphalt. Because asphalt, state of North Carolina, you're now required to have nothing but asphalt in order to run car sales. And so I'm only looking to use that part of the property. But we have, we have also looked into, into getting a surveyor out there, but once, we'll do that once after everything, hopefully, we can get approval from the city to be, for the rezoning for auto sales. And if all that goes well, the owner, he'll still be able to keep his residential for the remaining areas. Now, I have, I have also went around the neighborhood a little bit, spoke to a few different people, just kind of let them know what I'm looking to do. Everybody, everybody seems to be okay with it that I have spoken to. Nobody has seemed to get me anything crazy. I'm just looking to, you know, try to get everybody's hand on this.
This is a former bank building?
It's a former bank, Old Carter Bank.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
Don't look currently vacant, right?
Yes, sir. There was going to be a daycare not too long ago, um, but the daycare did not follow through. I'm assuming because of across the street, there is some sort of daycare already there.
And this was the auto sales?
Auto sales, um, I have, I have another, well, not my location, but I have a buddy who has a current location that's currently open and running properly for be able to service my cars. So, there won't be any cars that are, do not for sale on the lot. Anything that is on the lot, um, will be ready for sale. I will be doing my own cleaning up there. There is space from where the, where the drive-through from the bank of West on that side. Um, there's no, nothing that's going to be blocking me there. I do have an entrance and an exit. Um, I will have to get some sort of permit from North Carolina DOT, but that's just going down there, just letting them know one side's going to be exit, the other side's going to be an entrance. Um, I also, you know, start off with, I'm starting off on my own. So, I'm, you know, that lot fits thirty-plus cars, thirty to forty cars if you, if you put it like that. Personally, I'm going to start with ten to fifteen cars, just because of myself, my capital, and my availability. That, that's why I'm not going to, I'm not looking to start with something smaller. I'm looking to start something where I don't want to move within a year and a half, a year, you know, just because I know my capability, who I am, the, the people that I bring to the car business. Um, as far as, I have a lot of people that have just followed me, whether I've gone from this dealership to this dealership. There's always people still, hey, messaging me, um, hey, do you have this, do you have that, do you have this available? And so, um, I know it's something that I can grow into. It's probably a little bit too, too big to start off with, but that's okay, just because I will grow into it within a year, year and a half. I do, um, also, my plans, um, you know, help the community come by. My help to the community is, I will be giving employment, I will. As I grow into it, start off with, I'm only going to have, of course, one person, maybe two max for the first six months, six, seven, six to, six to twelve months, I mean, it'll be minimal three to four people, that's including myself. Now, a year down the road, a year, sorry, a year and a half to two years, I'll be able to employ a lot more people because I'm going to, I'm going to grow. I'll have more than fifteen cars on the lot, I'll have about twenty to twenty-five. And then, therefore, um, I love to go to auctions, I, I'm a car guy. You know, I don't buy anything if I can't feel, see, touch, or anything like that. So, if I, um, I have to be away sometimes, and if I have to be away, I'm going to have to have an employee, more than just one employee. There is enough parking, there is handicap parking as well, um, to go along with it.
Any other questions?
Could you also, um, just elaborate, you also included wholesale, um, as part of the request to permitted use? So, what was intended by that?
You said what now?
Auto sale.
Wholesale, so wholesale just means if, if, if Mr. Black comes to me and he has to trade, he wants to trade something in, let's say something he's been sending in the backyard. Um, and I want to be able to send it to Ray's Auto Auction that's right, uh, right there by, by Red Oak Brewery. Um, I have to be able to have my, my license, at that point, I'm not considered a wholesaler. And so, instead of retailing that piece, I'm now wholesaling it. So, it's going from dealer to dealer versus from dealer to, to, um, to, to retail.
It's all related to?
It's all the same thing, yes ma'am. It's all the same thing. It's just wholesale just not, uh, just means, um, the type of customer. So, instead of a retail customer, you guys would be retail customers versus being Crenshaw Hyundai. He would, if he came and bought a car from me, I would wholesale that car to him. Means that he, means as long as he has an, an North Carolina auto dealer license, he does not have to pay my doc fee, what everybody hates to pay when everybody sees all that paperwork, it's the only way you're going to get around it. Um, you don't have to pay doc fee, you don't have to pay sales taxes on that piece. So, of course, whether you pay your sales taxes poorly, um, or any...
Any other questions? Thank you. If there is anyone who wishes to speak on item four from the public, now would be the time to step up to the podium, give your name and address. This is item four. Okay, no comments there. Um, any question, I mean, any, um, letters or phone calls or anything that we're not aware of on this? Staff recommendations?
Just general inquiries as well. Just wanted to...
This is a, this is a limited use area.
It is a limited use request, um, for the auto sales or retail, uh, as well as the wholesale. Um, and it's, and this is the current zoning. So, the area that's hatched is the area that is requested to be changed. The property also extends to East Davis Street here, so it's one, one large lot. And, um, this area, MBR, MBR medium density residential would not, is not part of the rezoning unless that is not changed.
There, there's enough structure on that section of the property, isn't there?
Yeah. That was where the fireworks staff had his house.
Yeah.
Run the fortune. Staff recommendations?
So, this area is, is right on the cusp of the downtown, and it's in the mixed use, future land use designation. So, included in, um, the staff report, there's a description of what the mixed, the intent of what the mixed use, future land use designation, um, entails. And it's really intended to be, um, a, a mix of commercial and different, um, ground floor related uses, uh, such as, um, professional offices, storefront resale, cafes, shops, with the upper stores, stories intended to be more residential and, or office, a, a traditional mixed use to help support, um, and balance the downtown and the, um, residential neighborhoods nearby. Uh, so, we do feel that, um, the addition of auto sales and wholesale, uh, just specifically, um, does not meet the intent of the mixed use, um, future land use designation. Um, these uses also are not allowed in the mixed use zoning district, which we have a category four. Um, so, we are, um, not recommending the approval of this rezoning request for those reasons and, um, and highlight option three, uh, in the staff report. Um, we, we feel that, uh, these proposals are just too, um, restrictive and do not provide enough alternatives in terms of enhancements to, in, to the corridor and the area and serve as a, a balance, um, to the, to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Question for staff, Jamie. Had it been a, just a standard GB designation without the truncation of the limited use on it, it would have been a bit more minimal, I think.
I, I think so, or, you know, potentially, um, eliminating the auto sales and adding in a variety of other types of uses. Um, you know, we certainly want people to, um, operate their businesses and expand within the city of Burlington, but this is, um, this is a site that really is a, a large site that has a lot of opportunities and will serve, I think, as a catalyst for other development in that area. So, um, I think there's certainly opportunities for, um, other types of commercial uses and, and newer uses that, that can support that, um, that area.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Artchenka?
Sir?
You can come up.
I, so I hear exactly everything that you guys are saying, or I guess what you're saying. Um, that building, so the owner of the building's my cousin. And so, and so, there has been multiple people, nobody has the capital. And the people that have the capital not trying to use it in that area. And so, I'm just trying to be able to help the city somehow, some way, um, to give back. And the way me giving back is, of course, I got to take care of me, which is me and my family. And then, you know, once I do that, I don't want to be where everybody else is at. Um, you're right in the middle, right by the Plaza Center, every, all your dealers are all bunched up together on one end by Plaza Latina or either down by Glen Ranger. There's nobody, there's nobody there by me or, or that will be there by me. Now, um, I have a few other people that own some businesses around here, and, you know, once they see the place, they, I've, I've actually taken the people, um, a tour and trying to help them and, hey, look, would you be opposed to doing something like this? Would you be opposed to doing this? Would you be opposed to doing that? Um, I've done that for a few, extreme autos, I did the same thing for them guys. I showed them a building and, you know, it's just how I make a living. And, um, nobody seems to have capital to try to be, a coffee shop wouldn't survive in this place. Um, coffee, a little clothing store wouldn't survive in this place. And I'm not sitting here trying to bash any other business or anything like that. But, um, this place needs a place that's, that has a little bit of capital in the pocket, um, that can sustain month, 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 where they, they may sell fifteen cars one month, and they, next month, they may only sell seven. Um, and for me to only be able to survive month to keep going, open business, I need to sell three cars a month. Three to four cars a month, pay, pay all of my utilities. Um, and that's me doing the math on the numbers that I have. So, if I sell fifteen, twenty cars a month, this business is gravy for me, but a coffee shop goes in there, they need to sell, they need to sell twenty thousand coffees. That'd be Starbucks and Dunkin's killing the game here. It's just not going to happen. Um, so this place needs somebody, you know, someone with some capital. Uh, and nobody seems to have capital around there, just because of the home. And so, I think, let's say your next door neighbor, he may need a little part-time job, um, as far as sitting on his tail all day long, waiting on the mailman each and every month. And so, I may be that guy to maybe, hey, look, will you run these cars down here? I need these cars ran, bam, 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 I will pay your taxi as you drop them off to come back and pick the next one up. But that, you know, um, that's keeping him within his limits of his, of his SSA that he'll be able to receive month to month. Um, so, we don't, so we don't cut into any of that, so, um, that's just me. And, but I don't really have much else. I appreciate you guys, um, you know, for hearing me out. Um, I know you guys don't recommend everything, but I know there's still another, um, a second opportunity at this. And, you know, we go from there. Appreciate you all.
Just a, a quick, a quick question and follow-up, if, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, considering that you've only requested two uses as part of the limited use...
That was going to be my, and as I came up here, um, so, well, Mr. Brown, um, this, so my first business I openly opened up, you know, on my, under my names and stuff like that. Now that I helped somebody start something up, it's Pearl's, it's an esthetician shop on eight oh four South Church Street and, which has nothing to do with car sales. And we didn't have to do anything, no change of use, anything like that for the other building next to Paul's Doughnut Shop or Paul's, whatever the name is, but we didn't have to do anything like this, we didn't have to go through any rezoning. And so, Mr. Brown has been trying to do everything, he can't explain everything to me. Um, and so, I'm, I'm a rookie when it comes to learning this stuff, and so, I told him exactly what I had did, but he told me when I come here to actually ask you guys, maybe, that may not be the correct zoning or, you know, for, you know, when it comes to OR or GB, you know, maybe it wasn't the correct stuff, but I, I just need to be able to find something that, you know, or maybe someone that can help me or guide me to what, what's it going to be the correct zoning that I need. I understand how it kind of hurts the limited use gets, um, because I only need to use a certain part of the property. Maybe I just, I didn't click on the right ones or, you know, when I was doing my application to be able to have this today. Um, so, if there's anything, you know, a different one that can, um, that, that there's available for auto sales, um, maybe you guys can help me out in trying to figure it out, you know, before the actual, or gets to the city, or I'm not sure if it's already too late.
So, the zoning that you're seeking, the intent of what you're requesting is specific to auto sales or rental? Um, that, that would be, if, if you're looking to change and expand the uses that are currently allowed, um, going, requesting the zoning, and I'll just pull up the zoning map quickly. But, the current zoning is O and I, office and institutional, that's that blue shade. That use is not currently permitted.
For auto sales.
So, you've, correct, so you've requested a rezoning to general business, which is this...
The GB.
Red shade, but you have limited the uses that you're proposing as part of your rezoning request. Mr. Brown here?
No.
You have, um, limited your requested number of uses to very specifically only allow for auto sales or rental or wholesale. So, that's why, as I was explaining, how it's inconsistent with the future land use designation because it doesn't allow for any other alternatives in future uses, future development beyond those two specific uses. So, if you were to, I'm not sure if you're a property owner?
Oh, my home, yes.
No, here?
Oh, no ma'am, I'm not...
So, let's say you were the property owner, and this rezoning was approved. Somebody wanted to operate something else besides those two uses, they'd have to go back through this process again.
Well, let me ask you this, um, because the MBR is part of the residential. Um, so, and I don't know if you had said, getting, does that count far as to where I said, as long as everything can get approved far as the land that I'm trying to use? He's going to still be keeping the MBR, and that's where we're going to survey the property to where it will still stay as commercial on that side and...
Right.
And...
That's this area that's hatched, so we have not included...
So, there's an actual split right there. There's cement and everything that divides those, those two pieces of the property.
Yeah, we're not, we're not even looking at that portion of the property as considering a, a recommendation or not. If that's part of that, as, as I understand it, that's not changing.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
What part of your request?
Correct, correct. I'm only trying to use what's the asphalt I'm part of.
Okay. Have, have any other comments?
Thank you, Ms. Artchenka. Uh, going back to, uh, what Ms. Artchenka was saying, that, uh, he's looking at this from his family and his personal point of view. And of course, just as a, um, matter of record, we are tasked with looking at the entire situation, the larger picture. We don't have the, uh, ability, I guess, to personally look at it as a personal thing, but we're tasked by the city to look at an overall view. And putting in a limited use like a auto dealership and necessarily multi-tasked area, uh, I can see where the staff has said, you know, that's what the UBO was designed to do. And you have, uh, mixed use all around there, so it'd be introducing a limited use, basically. Uh, and that's part of our task is to look at the big picture. So, I, I see where y'all are coming from. But, that being said...
From my perspective, deciding that it's auto sales is more than it's limited the usage for the future.
Yeah.
If it was an expanded GBLU request with more uses that match the MX mixed use designation, then it would be more, you know, it'd be better to...
More powerful.
For that location.
Yeah.
Even if you did that, if you put in the, the car dealership.
Any...
Any, any further questions? There are no more comments from the gallery?
We didn't take any comments yet.
I asked.
Okay, yeah. All right, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was just wondering if either the staff or the, uh, Mr. Artchenka knows, how long has the building been vacant?
The building's been vacant for about two and a half years now. And I'm looking, um, I'm not looking short term, that's why I'm looking for this vote, and so, I'm there for the law.
I, I understand it, and we are too, but we're looking for the, the entire city's benefit.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I guess procedurally, it seemed, uh, from the description given, if he enlisted in ten or twelve uses, it would apparently be more comparable than on the two.
I can't speak for the commission, but I think it would depend on what...
For the staff, staff recommendation?
It would depend on what the uses were, sir. It would depend on what the uses were, sir. I mean, not just adding uses is an automatic.
Their recommendation is made on the proposal that they have right now. She's saying that she couldn't really speak on something other than that without meeting with the staff, but based on the proposal that she received, that's why she's making her recommendations.
But the recommendation's negative, right?
Yes.
For the, as proposed. But, yeah, go ahead.
There are no more comments, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend denial of the request to rezone property from office institutional, O I to general business, limited use of G P L U. The portion of this property, property to be rezoned is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of South Broad Street and East Wedge Avenue, on the west side of East Wedge Avenue, addressed as one oh six South Broad Street, and consisting of Allen County Tax Identification Number one three six zero three four. The motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan, calls for this area to have mixed uses. Per the city's twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, this designation refers to mixed use residential and commercial areas that are within Burlington's downtown neighborhood centers. Many of these commercial spaces are here to entice pedestrians, to patronize businesses. Ground floors should be active with uses which include professional, personal services, storefront retail, restaurants, cafes, and shops. Upper floors may be residential or office. Often, mixed use developments are infill opportunities, allowing the traditional neighborhood street law to be completed and are popular ways to revitalize transit active neighborhoods. The applicant's list of requesting uses, limited strictly for auto sales or rental and warehouse, does meet the intent of mixed use designation.
Does not.
Does not. Does not meet the intent of the mixed use designation, nor are they allowed in the mixed use zoning district. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that. The requested zoning is incompatible with the intent of future land use designation. Neither auto sales or rental and warehouse storage uses provides sufficient opportunities for mixed use development. There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Roll call please.
Chair Black?
Aye.
Member Beasley?
Aye.
Member Parker?
Aye.
Member Run?
Aye.
Member Nelson?
Aye.
And member Hutton?
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle, you will be receiving a letter to let you know when this, uh, action will be voted on at city council or, or there'll be a public hearing for city council, so you will be notified in advance.
Yes, sir. Is there a time, is there like a date or?
They will, they will notify you when, uh.
Yes, sir.
When they're ready.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number five, rezoning twenty-three seventeen, R C C G Restoration, to present a request to rezone property from heavy industrial to light industrial, limited use. This property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Maple Avenue and Flushing Street, inbound by Thomas Avenue on East, addresses twelve fourteen Maple Avenue, and consistent with Allen County Tax Identification Number one three three zero zero four. Is there a representative from R C C G Restoration?
Yes, sir.
If you would approach the podium, give your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us to make this presentation. I'm the, my name is Pastor Edwin A. Berry. I'm the pastor of the New Testament Church of God Restoration, located at twenty-three ninety-seven Corporation Parkway in Burlington, North Carolina, two seven two one five. And, uh, we have been in the, the area for about four years and we have, uh, grown the property we are currently renting. So we purchased this property, which is, uh, located in a location where we have some of our members and we have had some outreach, uh, in that area. And we are looking to have a, a property where we can, uh, be able to serve our community better, provide the resources to meet their needs. And by the way, this is my co-pastor.
Good evening, everyone.
So we co-pastor the church together and, um, we're looking to build, they've purified the environment. Right now the building has been absent, it has been vacant for many years and, uh, trying to, uh, renovate the building to accommodate our, our congregation and also to serve our community by providing outreach. Uh, we've had, uh, two outreach, uh, missions in the community last year where we did health care for the community and provide school boots and, uh, invited cold health hospital came with their mammogram machine to do his head screenings in the, in the community. And, uh, we provide, uh, COVID, uh, packages during the COVID season to people that needed help. And, uh, we're looking at, uh, expanding some of the parking spaces so that we can serve the community and also, um, have, uh, some better landscaping in the area to beautify the environment, make it more, more, uh, beautiful for the, for the area. And after making my application for the rezoning, I think the staff made some recommendations to expand the use to, not just re- limited to religious institution, but also to include use for coffee shops or event venue, for the museum or victim center, for indoor commercial recreation, for restaurant, indoor, uh, outdoor seating, retail use, for manufacturing, live manufacturing, market space, and for warehouse and storage. And we accepted the proposed recommendations as part of the rezoning process. So, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the commission have any questions right now for the petition?
Would most of your parishioners live in the area where you want to build the church?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And from your opinion, would you think that this area is physically safe for the, the church and the parishioners to?
Absolutely, absolutely. Actually, there's a church right behind where we are right now. Uh, there's a little building there, it's also a church. And, uh, the area is very, is very spacious. I've driven, I've, I've driven around the area and, uh, I've never seen anything unusual going on. I've been there in the night, in the daytime.
Traffic as well, but I guess it hasn't been improved since then as well.
So we have one of our engineers here, he's the one helping us to, with the parking, making more park, parking spaces available and is working with the city to get, uh, who works for the apartment and, uh, also the location of the building itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments that they wish to address on item five? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Um, good evening. My name is, um, Angela Corbett and, um, my home address is twenty thirty-one Courage Chapel Road, Burlington, North Carolina. Um, but I have a rental in this area, it's on Thomas Avenue. Uh, it's a family home, it's been in our family for years. Um, and there, Queens Chapel Church sits in one corner. Um, and if I'm not mistaken, this chain of this rezoning, that's like a warehouse that sits at the, at the other corner. Um, so Thomas Avenue is kinda like, be squashed and just like sucked in the middle of these two churches. Um, so I'm not sure how, um, traffic would be on, mostly churches have events on Sundays, but some people have, it sounds like this is gonna be an outreach church and I'm, um, not opposed to it. I just have concerns that this area may not be able to, um, accommodate that high volume of traffic. There's already like, um, no drainage on that street, there's no curb, no gutters, no, it's just, um, hasn't had any care and that Burlington has not taken good care of that part of town as far as the streets. Um, so I'm just not sure, then it goes, then there used to be a little co on the other side of the street of Tom, uh, Maple Avenue that closed down and boarded it up, it looks terrible. So, you know, as you're entering into Burlington to address our downtown, you would want your entrance of people getting off to one forty-five to look as well as does at your other exits. So, um, I just have concerns about that traffic and that little, those streets are already very small and I don't see any space to widen them or if they're, that's even in the forehands. That's all that.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make about item number five?
Item.
Please come forward. Did you name an address, please?
My name is Tyler E. Dabo and I'm living in six nine one five Whittle Drive in Brown Summit, on the other side of Greens Park. I am the engineer working with the church, we got in this area. And there is drainage there. Now, is it adequate? We asked the question if there's any flooding. So far, there's no flooding. Um, it is, there's no carbon, yes, you are, but environmentally friendly, it is better than I think. So I think you will enjoy what you have now than what you have carbon. Carbon create more concentration than what you have now, grass. So I think it's a good thing what you have, but what we have agreed with, with the city is to develop a plan to have more parking with this church. If you look at the front of Maple Street, it's grassy, Maple Avenue, thank you. It is grassy. We are working on right now to expand more parking and not to bring the entrance onto Maple, to keep the entrance on the side street.
Flush.
Flush. And then the, the vacant lot next to it is also owned by the church. So as we grow, if there's need for more parking, that's what we will head and purchase that. So it's all a total package. So the concern you had that we would crowd the street, it won't be from this church. And we've been there many times, even Saturdays night, it doesn't have that traffic. We are addressing that as we speak. There's two entrances to that, to that lot and those entrances we intend to keep. So in and out is gonna be there and then if we dare expand to the other parking, there's also entrance to the back of the street.
So is that little parking lot right there?
It's all.
So as you turn in on Flushing Street.
Uh-huh.
There's a little turn in to the left.
Yes, and then you go farther.
And then the out to the right, well, you keep around, being on.
Yes, yes. You have three parking. You have one in front, immediately once you turn to Flushing, there's one. If you go farther about fifty feet, there's another one. Then when you make a left to Thomas Street, there's another one.
But they'll go, they can exit out Thomas. So that's another, like, that street is very narrow there. I, I know. It's very narrow and they can exit out Thomas and that's gonna be.
The most, the highest of all our traffic would be on Sunday. And that's the less, there's very few traffic on Sunday. So you should not have that much concern.
I don't live there, but I, I am concerned about the neighbors that do live there. They're all elderly, you know, so.
For what we have going on with the traffic, with what we have now and we got.
Thank you very much.
I, I got a question, Mr. Black.
All right.
Um, where is this vacant lot you speak of?
That right up there. The next one.
Well, isn't there a house there?
There's one house.
Well, it's not vacant, it's not held there.
Yes, we bought the property like that, with a tenant living in there.
So do you intend to raise the house and build more parking over there?
Not now, as we grow.
Future.
In the future. When, when the church made a proposal to buy that lot, the owner owns both. And he proposed selling both together, so we purchased both together.
It's kinda hard to talk on the map, but everything's behind the house, it's just pretty impressive.
Do you understand that? There's not a vacant lot.
We're not using it today. It's not part of what we're designing today.
No, that's for future.
But it's future growth.
And, and any use of that lot in relationship to the church would need to go back to the rezoning.
Yes, yes, that is true.
So it would come back to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
What was this building used for previously?
Say, uh, T-shirt screen. Mr. Day, a simple screen.
Liquidation warehouse.
Yeah, it's a liquidation warehouse.
This never had a lot of traffic in that building.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I was maybe to announce it, but would that building be the church or is it, they're gonna build a new church?
No. We're using the building as a church. All they're doing is internal renovation.
And that is the permanent?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any others? Any comments from the municipal building, Colorado?
Nelson.
Staff recommendation?
So the staff recommendation for this area is, um, we are recommending the rezoning request. Um, you'll note here though, that this whole area is traditional residential, future land use designation. So all of the existing zoning, the heavy industrial, um, zoning, as well as the other commercial, um, zoning districts in that area are all non-conforming with respect to the future land use designation. Um, our feeling is moving from heavy industrial to, um, light industrial with a limited use request is moving into more conformance and is eliminating some of the more noxious, um, uses that could be currently operating without any kind of rezoning request. Um, we did have conversations about adding in some additional mix of uses that would, um, offer, uh, additional goods and services, um, to the neighborhood and the area, which the applicant, um, was in favor of and, and added in as part of their request. So with that said, um, we are recommending the rezoning request for option number two in your, um, consistency statement sheet.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will retain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from heavy industrial H I to light industrial, L I, limited use, H D R, should be L I, L U, right? Property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Maple Avenue and Flushing Street, inbound by Thomas Avenue on the east, addressed as twelve fourteen Maple Avenue, and consisting of Allen County Tax Identification Number one three three zero zero four. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan, in that it calls for this area to have traditional residential uses, the request is compatible with the existing residential and non-residential uses and zoning districts in the area. The requested list of limited uses will provide opportunities for additional goods and services in character with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed rezoning moves the property more into conformance with the future land use map compared to the existing heavy industrial H I zoning and provides a transition between the medium density residential M B R districts and the mixed use of Maple Avenue. This action is responsible and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land, of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call please.
Chair Black?
Aye.
Member Beasley? Member Beasley?
Aye.
Member Parker?
Aye.
Member Brown?
Aye.
Member Nelson?
Aye.
Member Hilton?
Aye.
He will be notified by the city council by letter when they will move on this. Thank you very much. That being the last item, is there any new business to come before this?
No, sir.
Uh, on all business, any reports yet on time, uh, time limit?
Everything is under.
Term limits and.
And I should have to report that hopefully in the next week.
Also absentee. Very good. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, motion there. Second. We're adjourned.